Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mr. Mason.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws and resolutions of Violet Township.
The laws and resolutions of Violet Township.
The code of ethics and rules and regulations.
The code of ethics and rules and regulations.
Of the Violet Township Fire Department.
Of the Violet Township Fire Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of firefighter paramedic.
Of the position of firefighter paramedic.
Violet Township Fire Department.
Violet Township Fire Department.
Fairfield County, Ohio.
Fairfield County, Ohio.
Which I have appointed.
Which I have appointed.
Law.
According to law.
Make it the best of my ability.
Make it the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So now it's party time for them, right?
Thank y'all.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming to support him.
Thank you, thank you.
That's half the audience.
We've now reached a portion of our meeting for public comment. If you would like to come up and address the trustees, you just state your name, your address. You will be limited to three minutes. Do I have anyone that would like to make a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Jervick. I reside at 12599 Tolgate Road. Tonight, I'd like to speak to two issues. One, to amend tonight's agenda to consider a resolution. And two, to add an addendum to the minutes of the last meeting. Violet Residents for Responsible Development requests amending tonight's agenda to consider a resolution to delete Section 3B, Planned Residential District from the zoning code. This action is within the powers of the trustees. The PD section is optional per the Ohio Revised Code. Any existing PDs shall continue as is and be governed by regulations in effect at the time of approval or as modified. Deletion of Section 3B will not require any changes to the existing zoning map. After deletion of this section, the township may comprehensively rewrite the PD section in accordance with the upcoming newly created Township Comprehensive Development Plan and without reliance on a moratorium. Passage of this resolution is responsive to the outcries of residents over the last several years opposed to high-density development, but to no avail. Passage of this resolution addresses citizens' concerns about overdevelopment, crowded schools, increased traffic, the loss of character of their neighborhoods in the township, as well as higher property taxes. This is a solution that avoids piecemeal amendments to this section, meets today's realities in 2021, and provides residents with input via the Comprehensive Development Plan. And again, it is wholly within your powers. The second item I'd like to address is an addendum to the minutes of the last meeting, September 1, 2021. On page five, Mr. Mahollen responded to Mr. Miller's public comment. If one listens to the tape of this trustee meeting, Mr. Mahollen was referring not to a meeting with Violet Residents for Responsible Development, but Mr. Miller's comments that he, Mahollen, did not attend the Fairfield County Land Use Plan meetings. Mahollen said he would have to check with Ed Dorbino regarding such meetings. I request the minutes on page five, paragraph 7D1, be so amended to reflect the meetings in question or with Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to make public comment? Seeing no one else, we'll move right along. Program areas, Mike Little, Fire Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, and I appreciate you moving the resolution to the front of the meeting so we could swear a Leo out. So I have no other resolutions for you tonight. I have a proclamation in the packet. It's our standard proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Unfortunately, we've canceled our open house of the fire station due to the ongoing COVID stuff and basically more so to protect our firefighters. We just didn't feel that there was a really good way or convenient way to be able to have 500 or 600 people come into the firehouse and not have an issue with somebody getting ill. So we took the high road and canceled it again. Hopefully, we'll be back at it next year. As for general updates, Station 592, we've reached the point of substantial completion. Currently, what they're working on is balancing the HVAC system, which they've been doing that the last three days this week, and I think it finally completed today. Working on punch list items. And then there is an underground drainage system that has to be installed behind the garage just to make sure that there's no ponding or any excess water going back to the houses behind there. Other than that, it's just small items. The garage actually, we're using as of today to put our vehicles in there. And inside the building itself, there's really not a lot going on other than, like I said, the balancing and just small items. So we're really at a good point. We should be done hopefully within the next, I would say, two to three weeks. Finally done with everything. Chief Paxton's here tonight, but he's been on vacation. He'll be on vacation the rest of this week. We didn't have a meeting to be able to tell you that. So he will be back on Monday in his office. You have the August monthly report, since we did not have a meeting at the end of the month last month. So the August report, when we look at things, we're about 10% ahead of last year on run volume. Transports are ahead 16%, and revenues are ahead by 9%. And again, those are compared to 2020 numbers. If you recall, the month before, I kind of compared it back to 2019. I'll do the same thing again with the September report. However, I can tell you that I don't know if it was the busiest month we've ever had, but if it wasn't, it's pretty darn close to it. But we had over 700 runs in September this year. 511 of them were EMS runs. That's not including the community med. That was 511 calls for service just for EMS over a 30-day period. So it was very busy. As for Station 2, all the personnel are back where they belong. So we've moved everybody back into Station 2. We did that over the last week and a half. So anybody that was put out either up here or at Station 1 is back where they normally belong at Station 2. We're meeting with Ohio Health tomorrow to go over their construction plans. We're meeting with them at 9 o'clock. So Prevention and I will be there along with all the Ohio Health people to talk about the new hospital, what they're doing, look at the plans, and hopefully get an idea when they plan on doing groundbreaking, which my understanding is they want to do that this fall. And if they do, their hope is to be done sometime in 2023, up and running with that building. And lastly, I just want to have a real quick discussion if possible. You all know who Heather Wendell is. She's our on-staff physical therapist. Heather's been with us for 15 years. And for 15 years, she's received the same remuneration weekly. I did a little math on this and just thinking of a, if we had given her a 3% raise each year over the last 15 years, instead of $500 a week, she would have been charging us about $778 a week. I would propose, after discussing this with Chief Paxton, I would propose that we need to increase her weekly from 500 to 750, which takes her from 39,000, I'm sorry, which takes her from about 26,000 a year to 39,000 a year. Seems like a very significant jump. However, what I just told you about a 3% raise over the last 15 years, we would be well within that parameter doing that. Heather is a highly valuable asset to the Fire Department. She's proven her worth more times than not when it comes to injury prevention and getting guys back to work after being injured. Her knowledge and skills and abilities related to physical therapy and ergonomics, proper lifting techniques, along with what we do with Matt Winning, with the strength conditioning, has proven to be a very, very significant value to the Fire Department. So I guess if you guys are on board and want to discuss it more, that's fine. I can discuss it. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion tonight to allow me to increase her as of January 1, 2022, to that 750 a week, and go forward from there.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional questions?
No, she's helped me a couple times when I had some issues. And she's just, it's phenomenal the knowledge she has to help people to make correction with their strain or sprain or whatever it might be.
No, I agree with you 100%. So that's why I think it's really important.
Ms. Neecamp, call the roll.
I'll be calling up for motion 2021-1006B, just so we have it on the record correctly. Mr. Mahollen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. I know she does. And that's all I have for you tonight unless you have any questions.
Additional questions for the Fire Chief, Mrs. Wild?
I have none. Thank you for your report.
Mr. Dunlap?
How the guys liking it. I know there's some changes in different places in there and how it's set up a little bit. They're back to Station 2 now?
Yeah, we're back. I mean, there's really no change in anything. Everybody's back in their normal office. I mean, it's nice having the flooring. I'm glad we did the flooring we did and put it in. It's made a huge difference already from the standpoint of just general cleaning and keeping it clean and all that. The training room's not put back together yet. We just, we didn't put it all back yet because of them down, balancing the system and having to go around and do what they do with the vents and everything. It was just easier to leave that out until that was all done. Once we're assured that that's all done, then we'll get the training room back together, get that pack van out of there. And I know that Robertson's working on getting the parking lot cleaned up and getting the, like, the cement trash, the pile of cement that's there, getting all that out of there. So it's getting there. I mean, the guys are in the front, they're actually, they're kind of used to being in the front parking lot now. So I don't know how many guys, well, how that'll change things, but that's why it's there. And yeah, it's good. I mean, the biggest change really, honestly, and it doesn't really affect a lot of people, probably affected Doc more than anybody, was the mezzanine area. It used to be really kind of the catch-all junk area, and there's absolutely no room for that up there now because having removed everything and put this new system in, if you've been to Station 1, you're familiar with what I'm talking about. The air handling unit that's up there pretty much takes up all the space along with the water softener, water heaters, you know, all the stuff that has to go on, all the vents, all the ductwork and everything that goes up there. So it's, that is a completely different area. The garage out back is nice, like I said, because we can get the vehicles in there. So that's going to be really nice, especially in the winter months, when it snows on the ground and stuff. We don't have to come in and shovel cars off and spend an hour doing that, getting them ready to go out and do runs or take, do what they do every day. So yeah, it's been nice. The guys, I would tell you, at the end of the six months, they were about done. And I told them they would be. We were upfront about it. This is going to be a process. And it's going to start out and be really cool, and it's going to get really painful at the end, and it did. But life is good now, and they're happy with it. So we're good.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
I have no question, Chief. Thank you for your report.
Thanks.
Ed Rubina, Township Administrator?
I'm sorry. I was expecting a response to my request to put this item on the agenda, the resolution I distributed. I'd expect that you give me some kind of a response regarding this resolution.
I've not seen it or know anything about it. And I don't, Kelly, has that been through to the zoning commission?
No.
And they haven't sent a request to us? So this needs to go to the county prosecutor? Because as I understand the law, if we would pass something like this, then all the current CD or units that you're talking about, that would go away. We would have no enforcement with all those other places. They could do whatever they want to.
We're talking about strictly the PD section. We're not talking about repealing the whole code.
But if you, but those other subdivisions that are subject to that, if you repeal it, they could do whatever they want to, and we can't enforce anything. So I think, I think we need to send it to prosecutor to get a legal opinion.
Is that the position of the other trustees, please?
Mrs. Wild?
Great. Can you go ahead?
I just want to report to you that the zoning commission is currently working in reviewing other township PDs. This is a discussion that the zoning commission has been having. They've explained to this group the ramifications of repealing Section 3B. And I can have Jennifer Huber come to the meeting to explain the ramifications of removing Section 3B.
I would request that our group be represented at such a meeting so we can respond.
That's fine. And I have been working with Kelly. We've been talking about this issue. So we are working on a path that's going to resolve all of this. So it is being worked on.
Okay. Well, I wish you would please consider the language in the resolution. We feel it is legally sufficient. Thank you.
What I would suggest is in an interim period that you get with Mr. Dubina so that your questions are answered and we have some clarity on what's being asked for.
I think if you read the resolution, it's all in there. Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read the resolution because you just brought it. Thank you.
Correct.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I do have my report. We've talked for months about the salt barn. We did have bid opening on September 21. We had five bidders with the lowest bid being $297,780. The architect does, in their opinion, Miller Builders is the best qualified and most responsible builder for the salt barn. And they also recommend that if we award the contract, we add a 5% contingency to allow for any unknowns. So that would take the total cost up to $312,669. I have talked to fiscal officer, and we do have the funds if we decide to move on with this project.
Can I make a comment on that now? I know of other places that have similar buildings, other townships, and it was half this cost. And we need to go back and look at it and review it further because I just believe that they think that a lot of township has a lot of money, and everybody bid it high.
Okay. We'll follow up on that, Mr. Dunlap?
Thank you.
Also, I'm going to be working on some additional security measures up here at the facility for after our events, just, you know, door locks, cameras, et cetera, et cetera. We did post for the zoning board vacancy. We did post until the end of September. We've only received two resumes. So if the trustees would like to interview them or look at their resumes, whatever, I will set that up, send you the resumes, however you want to do it.
I don't know about the other two. I'd like to see the resumes and then the interview.
Okay. We did have a regional clout meeting here last week. I thought it went very well. It was more roundtable discussion about how other townships spent COVID funds, what's their plans for the ARA funds. But I thought it was very good, and thanks, Mrs. Wild, for attending. Also, Vision for Violet will be having an open house tomorrow night. I know my report says October the 8th, but it's the 7th, from 6 to 9.
Where is that?
It's in the Event Center. Then from last meeting's report, I did put in, I don't know whether everyone's had a chance to read it, but the president of the Homeowners Association for Metamore Subdivision, they are asking, will you look about maybe putting no parking on one side of the street throughout the whole subdivision? And if we do, and at least make no parking there at the pork chop. I guess someone parks too close to the pork chop coming off of 204, and it causes people to go around. So, Mr. Dunlap, if you would like to drive that with me one day, we can look at it over.
Okay. Did they say that they had said anything after their membership?
They didn't say that, no. And a couple other things from the last meeting. I did talk about the ODOT stimulus that I'd set up a meeting when I returned from vacation. An ODOT representative will be in next Wednesday, and we'll go look at some roads about paving to apply for some of that grant money. Also, one thing that came up late yesterday afternoon, the Health Department, the Franklin County Board of Health, I met with them for a little bit. They would like the trustees to send a support letter or to support a project for the Bates Crawford subdivision. They want to put gravity sewers in there. Most of that area is with aerators, et cetera, et cetera. And they want us to support the project. They're working with the county to use some of the ARA funds to get this done.
Which subdivision?
The Bates Crawford.
Which street is that?
That is, go ahead. Go ahead.
It's the subdivision.
Bates Crawford subdivision is located on the south side of Basil Western Road, or Black Lake Eastern Road. It runs from the eastern boundary of Metamore to Alt Road. They're large lot subdivisions. The plan also calls for sewer-ing up Wagram Road and down Fairlon Drive and DeCarlo Lane as well.
Franklin County brought that to us or Fairfield?
Fairfield County.
They're not asking us to provide any funds. They're just asking us to support the project.
Is that something that you would feel we should support?
Yes, I'm all for centralized sewer, personally.
That's good enough for me. You can speak with the other two trustees regarding it.
I think that's great.
I would make a motion that we support that endeavor with the service of Bates Crawford and Fairlon.
Second.
Any additional questions for Mr. Dubina? Ms. Neecamp, call the roll.
We'll call this a motion 2021-1006C. Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Mahollen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have a couple little resolutions tonight. Resolution 2021-1006-02, a resolution authorizing political subdivision to participate in the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Move to Doc.
Second.
Any questions?
That saves us a lot of money by doing that.
Ms. Neecamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Mahollen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution is 2021-1006-03, a resolution to approve the final plat for Heron Crossing West, Section 2.
Pleasure the board on 03.
Should we not wait till after the public hearing on that tonight?
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Then let's wait till after the public hearing on that one. I think we're getting pretty close.
I wasn't watching the clock.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting close. Any other resolutions besides that, Mr. Dubina?
That's all I have tonight, sir.
Additional questions for the Township Administrator, Mrs. Wild?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlap?
No, other than it looks like they're doing a good job down there on King's Crossing and Diley Road, even though they put up barricades that stops the road to allow the material to dry and people driving on the grass and through the ditch to get around. They, I think they should have called the sheriff for a little bit of support because coming off of Diley Road, it hit up all the interchange. It was just, it was wild people getting off and then coming down and wanting to make a right turn to go out to King East or Basel Western Road, and they couldn't, so they just drove around, wanted to ditch and everything else. But I hope it didn't damage that section of the road. Then to complicate things, traffic there, the railroad crossings, both of them in Peckington, were shut down today for a while. Nobody could go any place to go around. Did you know anything about that or hear anything?
So I knew about the railroad track? Because I get the texts from the police department. I was not aware of anything going on on Diley Road. I talked to Mr. Dubina about this earlier, but we were not made aware of anything going on down there. And the fact that that road was shut down is kind of a big deal to the Fire Department.
Yeah. But I thought they were going to do half and then maintain traffic on the other half and then switch back. But apparently, that didn't happen. So maybe we have a conversation with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I know that was the original plan, was to not stop traffic at all.
Yeah. But they did.
Anything else, Mr. Dunlap?
No, that's the only thing I had.
I have no questions for you, Mr. Dubina. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dunlap.
I would move that we take a, we recess the regular Township trustee meeting and go into the public hearing for the Heron Crossing, Section 2, a final plat review.
I will second that. Ms. Neecamp, call the roll.
Mr. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mr. Mahollen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wild?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The purpose of this public hearing is to review the final plat for Heron Crossing West, Planned District, Section 2, pursuant to Violet Township zoning resolution, Section 3B, which requires review and approval by the Township trustees. Here in Crossing West, the Planned District was approved in November 2019 and modified in 2020. Section 2 contains 51 lots, one full reserve and two parts of two other reserves. The plat is consistent with the approved development plan for Heron Crossing West. Fairfield County RPC voted to conditionally approve this plat in accordance with the Subdivision Regulations Committee report. And those are basically cleanup items. They've corrected all the issues that I have, and I'm ready to sign the plat once everybody else's issues gets corrected. So I request your approval of this plat.
So you're saying that everything that was originally submitted is correct in here?
Everything, they actually gave me one last correction. What you have was, they did not include a note for a preservation zone on the east and south perimeter. That has since been added, and I'm good with it.
At what phase in this do we have input as to the traffic control? At what phase in this do we have input as to the traffic control signage?
That's at the construction drawing portion, where they show where the traffic control signs will be placed.
Okay, I think Mr. Dubina and the Road Department, I would like to be part of that since it involves roads, and that's been assigned to me, to make sure that we have stop signs where they're supposed to be and yield signs instead of stop signs in other places, because all that does is make violators, and we don't want to do that, as long as we designate who has the right of way.
Right.
That's the only comments I have.
So just to be clear, the only addition is a preservation zone?
Yes, on page three.
Okay.
On page three of seven. Behind lots 69, 62 through 69, along that property line, which is the east property line, and then the perimeter no build zone along the south property line, adjacent to Reserve G, which is the south property line.
Let's say that again. That's Reserve G and where else?
Reserve G in at the rear of lots 62 through 69 on the east side of Revolt Drive. If you look at the bottom of the page where it says, you'll see Open Space H here in Crossing Section 3. It's right above that.
All right. And the Homeowners Association maintains that?
Yes, and the purpose of that easement, the text language states. Areas designated as perimeter no build zone shown hereon will be owned and maintained by the Heron Crossing West HOA. Said perimeter no build zone shall be left in its natural state, no tree cutting other than dead or diseased, mowing, or structures other than where required by storm sewer installation and maintenance, and where crossed by a multi-use path or sidewalk, shall be located within the perimeter no build zone area. And it doesn't permit overlot grading drainage facilities, utility lines, or utility structures within that no build zone as authorized by the county or its assigns, and that area is included with an open space acreage where what the reserve they're in.
I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have Mr. Telford?